I'm going to call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Here.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes?
One, two, three.
Okay, great. So there are a couple of changes to the agenda tonight. In the consent agenda, we are deleting approval of the November finance report. We're waiting on some information. And also, on the second page, where we're going to set a public hearing for redistricting of wards, we want to add in that, well, we'll add an additional public hearing that has to do with the CDBG grant. And also at that time, we will swear in council members, appoint our appointments of chief of police, attorney, city clerk and mayor. And I think those are the changes that I have. Does anybody else have any changes?
We'd be setting our normal council meeting nights, we'd be setting our depository. Is that it?
January 3rd organizational meeting, everything you do will be what you're doing.
Yeah, our normal organizational meeting would be moved to the 27th.
And I'd like to strike Brad Friger from the public forums section.
Oh, okay, tonight?
Tonight.
Okay.
Also, just a little bit ahead, we're going to move the fire tat, fire station task force stuff down to after city administrators' report. Melanie's going to talk about that, so.
Okay. Okay, great. Did we get them all?
That's the first time we've had a lot of that.
Yeah, right. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the November 22nd, 2021 council meeting. Approval of the minutes of the November 20th, 2021 special council meeting.
30th. Sorry.
Oh.
Missed print.
Sure. Approval of November 28th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $130,613.80. Approval of December 7th, 2021 special payroll in the amount of $2,808.66. Approval of the December 10th, 2021 payroll amount of $162,850.35. Resolution authorizing funds transfers. Approval of USDA step one debt in the amount of $25,950. That's for October and November. Approval of USDA wastewater treatment debt in the amount of $154,590. Again, that's for October and November. Approval of tax increment finance certifications. Acceptance of the Ways and Means Committee minutes from May 24th, July 12th, August 9th, August 23rd, September 27th of all this year. Acceptance of the Economic Development Committee minutes from November 22nd, 2021. Acceptance of the Arbor Committee minutes for October 6th of 2021. Acceptance of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee minutes of October 9th of 2021. Resolution approving employment in the Water Department. Approval of liquor license for the Lunchbox, La Hacienda, Flamingo Lanes, Ivy C Store, Fairfield Arts and Convention Center. Approval of total claims in the amount of $949,379.69. We had two claims, greater than $75,000, Four Seasons Escavation, $104,350.01, and Jones Contracting of $298,994.23.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Okay.
Second.
Move by Gandy. Second by Flornoy.
Yeah, Flornoy.
Last name's not coming. Okay, any discussion?
One question.
Yes.
Why were there so many past months Ways and Means minutes?
There were some that were submitted at the time or shortly after the council meetings. My understanding, my misunderstanding at the time was that a report to the council was sufficient and replacement of minutes. So I understand that's not correct, and so I've submitted the minutes to cover those missed meetings.
Okay, thanks.
I think we're caught up now.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. If there's no other discussion or questions, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes, except I abstain from approving the special meeting minutes.
Okay. Hallie.
Yes, also abstain from the November 30th special meeting.
Let me, excuse me a second, Rebecca. I need to abstain from the November 30th minutes as well. I wasn't present.
We won't have a quorum to approve the November 30th minutes.
So we'll have to hold off on approving those minutes until the next council meeting.
Yep. Okay. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
All righty. Thank you. So before we really get into the rest of the meeting, I want to recognize Mr. Michael Hallie for his service for the last 12 years and the hard work that you've done in serving Fairfield. We really appreciate all the work that you've put in. And, you know, I think Michael's been one of the hardest working council members, and we want to appreciate for all your service and wish you best of luck in your move to Iowa City and whatever your next step is. And so I'm here to present appreciation ward, present to Michael Hallie, in appreciation for your outstanding service to the City of Fairfield, City Council, 2010 to 2022, with thanks and gratitude for going above and beyond. And I want to invite anybody who wants to say, we got cake for Michael afterwards, and we'll have a little party.
Right. You have something to say, don't you?
Oh, wait, I think Rebecca wanted me to talk at the end.
Okay.
Okay, we'll hear more. But, you know, I wanted to recognize that this is his last, well, almost his last council meeting now.
Yeah, sorry. Keep adding that up.
We thought we were going, this was the last council meeting. But anyway, so I wanted him to relish in that the last, as much as he could, this last meeting. Okay, so we will move on to public forum and appearances, hydrant flushing and street sweeping. Ray Griffin.
Good evening. My name's Ray Griffin. I live at 304 West Fillmore. Got a little thorn in the side for years, and I finally thought I'd bring it to the council when they flush the hydrants. I got a couple of handouts here you might look at. It's just a photo of what happens to my drive down there when they do it, if you would like to just take a peek. Daryl's always been real helpful on the city to me. Fortunately, I live by, the storm sewer's out in front of my house, just off to the drive there by the mailbox. And it's, I probably clean it 30 times a year. Daryl comes down if I have a problem, he'll clean it too. So there's no problem there. But however, we usually sweep Fillmore once a year. I'm probably being generous, but Fillmore's usually swept once a year. So in the fall, after the leaves fall, there's quite a few leaves, you know, hanging down there. Well, for some reason in December here, we've had nice weather and the city came down and they did, or they came down to flush the hydrants. Well, they flush the hydrants, and every time they flush the hydrants, it doesn't appear as anyone wants to look where the water is going. They know there's a storm sewer, but they just don't realize that it's plugged whenever they do it. And in turn, it comes up over the sidewalk at my house, up in my drive, and then it goes out the back, out towards Obie Nelson Park. So I talked to Daryl, and he said, "It's not my problem." And I talked to one of the fellows on the Water Department, he says, "Not our problem. You know, it's passing the buck. I figured it's the person that lets it out is the person that's responsible for it." But they said, "Well, the streets aren't swept." And Daryl says, "Well, they shouldn't let it out. They should have checked the storm sewer." So it's passing the buck back and forth. And someone needs to say, "Hey, it's your responsibility. If you're going to let water out," and I would think, "Why don't you look where it's going?" But all they do is they turn it on and they're gone. And this happens almost every year, quite frequently. They might have missed a couple of years. So we just need to clarify, have someone clarify it with them. Why don't you look and see where it's going? Make sure the storm sewer is clear of debris and then let your water out. It's a simple solution. It's not a hard, you know, it's not hard to figure out.
Ray, is this once a year or multiple times a year? Will you clarify that again?
What, sweep the street?
No, when it floods.
Pardon?
When it floods. When they're flushing this.
Probably once a year.
Once a year, okay.
Yeah. So anyway, I just thought, someone needs to, whoever's on the street department or something, maybe you could figure out whose responsibility it is. You know, is it Daryl's? Is it the Water Department's? And like I say, just make sure that storm sewer's clean. And I clean it most of the time. If I'd have seen him there, a fellow from the Water Department, he came down, helped me take the leaves out of there after I seen it was flooded up in my drive. But what happens in December especially, well, we got the high temperature and low temperature in the mornings, and that turns to ice out there, and then people's walking on it. The kids are walking to school and stuff, so they, you know, they like sliding. Anyway, so if you can help me on it and just make a note to someone, look at the damn sewer, you know, the storm sewer, make sure it's not plugged.
Aaron, can you have that discussion and work that out at the department head meeting?
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
And like I said, I have no problem with Daryl. He's always been great whenever I need anything. He's, you know, bam, right there on the spot for me and stuff like that.
Great.
Because I do happen to live in a low, low area. It's low over there. And he's been great. If I tell him, "Hey, any chance you can come down?" I'll push it up on the curb and then he'll come down, and I'll use my skid loader and I can put it up on the curb, and then he'll send someone down to clean it up, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks, Ray. We'll try to get that worked out in a better procedure.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Uh huh, great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to resolution action items and ordinances. This first one is an action item, consideration toward bid of aerobic digester number one replacement project. Melanie?
Okay, so this project, this is a rebid. The last time we bid this, about a month and a half ago, we received one bid that was way out of line with what we were thinking. And so we rebid it, clarified the warranty period, and received three bids. The low bid was from Woodriff Construction of Fort Dodge at a base bid of $777,320. The second bid was from WRH with a base bid of $785,000. And the third bid was from Tricon General Construction of Cedar Rapids at $914,000. After we opened the bids, we looked at the documents that they submitted more carefully and realized that Woodriff, the low bidder, did not have all of the forms necessary for the project because it is a USDA project that requires lots of attachments. And so we had a conference call with Mr. Morrissey and McClure, and we decided it was in the city's best interest to recommend a ward to WRH.
Okay. Take a motion to accept that?
Yes. Make that motion that we accept.
Move by Ham, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Ham.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. Next action item, consideration of engineering services agreement, amendment to the HMA resurfacing of Grand Park Drive.
So one of the projects on next year's construction list is the overlay of Grand Park. In past years, Daryl has done asphalt overlay of the Sealco streets. We did it on 8th Street this last year. So in order to best coordinate all of the asphalt projects for next year, we're going to have French Rennecker do all of the design on, on all of our HMA projects instead of splitting it between my office and French Rennecker. So this is an amendment to add that additional asphalt work. There's an increase of $8,000 for the design and $6,500 for engineering during construction for a total budget amendment of $14,500. So we would recommend approval.
I move to approve amended engineering services agreement.
Second.
Move by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Next action item, consideration of engineering architectural services agreement with Klinger and Associates PC for library HVAC controls replacement.
Okay, another one of our projects for next year is to replace the controls at the library. We've replaced the boiler and then we replaced the air conditioning, and now to replace the controls. Totally beyond my purview, so we're asking Klinger and Associates to help put together the bid package with that. I will still help with the actual bidding and receiving of bids and doing the publication, but the technical stuff, Klinger has an agreement for $12,500 to assist with that. And that will also include looking at like the thermostats and some of the side components of the controls to see, can we fit it within the budget that we have? Can we piece some of it in a future budget? And kind of look at all of the control system, not just the main control box that's in the basement.
Okay, great.
I move we approve the engineering architectural services agreement with Klinger and Associates.
I'll second this.
Move by Flornoy, second by Rasmussen. Any questions?
Quick question. Melanie, if I'm not mistaken, the controls over at the library are more complex than pretty much any building because they have zones and they're trying to keep the temperature and the humidity at a certain level that's good for the books.
Yes, yeah. The multiple zones is the big part. One of the things that I've asked Klinger for is a non-proprietary control system, which will help the city in the long run as far as getting people to work on it. And that's, other than the fact that they've outlived their useful life, that's one of the reasons that we need to get rid of the existing system to help with our maintenance cost of it.
Great, good question. Okay, if there's no other questions or discussion, call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, consideration to set public hearing for redistricting of wards. We'd like to do this on the 27th and at 5:00 PM.
Is it okay if we do a 5:00 PM?
Five o'clock.
What date is the week is that?
That's Monday.
Two weeks from tonight.
No, okay.
Since it's kind of a special one, or we weren't going to have it, just so we get in and get out and everybody can get going.
Five o'clock.
If that's okay.
I'll do it if you promise it's the very last meeting.
I promise that will be the last one of this year.
Seems like, no more.
I'll need you to attend by telephone, if that's possible. I'll be out of time.
Well, actually, Tom is listening in by my phone right now, so you can, we can do that.
Okay.
Should I move we set the public hearing for December 27th at 5:00 in City Hall?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any other question? Not call the roll, and then we'll do the next one.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll also do a public hearing for the same date and basically time. It'll just be right after that where we deal with the CDBG grant and swearing in of council members in our organizational meeting that we normally would do on the 1st of January at noon. We'll just push that up a few days and it'll be done. And providing, yeah, everybody can be here.
Do we need separate motions for the public hearing and the rest of it?
Well, we'll just, we'll just add the rest to the agenda, but we need the public hearing for.
Yeah, right. You only want the motion for the public hearing.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
I move that we set a public hearing on December 27th at 5:00 PM.
Great, thank you.
For the CDBG grant.
Okay. There's a motion to move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion?
I've got a question for John. So if we swear in the new fourth ward council member.
We'll wait till the end of the meeting to swear in.
Well, we have, well, we have two representatives for those.
I feel new and sworn in.
If we swear in on the 27th.
We'll get a letter of resignation for the 27th at 5:00.
Does that mean I get off early?
We were going to handle that by waiting to do the swearing in until the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So that way.
So I'm off before the end of the year, as long as she's sworn in.
Right.
Can't have two. Fourth ward representatives.
Yeah. The new one just has to be sworn in by January 3rd.
All right, so you can do it before.
When we do our organizational, it's going to happen by then, so.
All right. Works for me.
So we're good to go.
We thought through that already.
Appreciate that.
Who else is sworn in that day?
You.
Me.
You.
Okay, so you have to be physically present to be sworn in?
So swearing in doesn't actually have to happen at a council meeting. It just has to happen before noon on January. We just normally do it. So as long as we get you done by noon on the 3rd.
Okay, because I won't be physically present on that day, so I'll just do it another time after that, okay.
And Rebecca.
I'll be four.
Rebecca can swear you in too. It doesn't have to be the mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll get him in January.
Normally is, but.
Okay.
That's pretty cool.
Okay, call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, next, the, next is a resolution, consideration of easement land acquisition for Highway 1 project. Melanie?
So in the past, when we have accepted easements and purchases for land, we've done them individually. This time, we have the one resolution with an Exhibit A that has all of the parcels. So this is for Highway 1, and on Exhibit A, there are 30, 30 of the 39 parcels have signed, and we've come to an agreement, and so this is for your approval. And then at the next council meeting, we'll, or we'll start to process checks for these people and then close them out finally. There are several columns on Exhibit A. There's the temporary easement compensation, so the stuff beyond the new right-of-way that we're getting for Highway 1 that's going to be disturbed only during construction. There's permanent easement compensation, and that is for the storm sewer that's going to go west of Highway 1 through the Dog Park and outlet out there. So there's, there's that one. Then there's the fee simple compensation, which that is the, the right-of-way purchase that we're doing. So we will own that seven feet on each side, an additional seven feet on each side. And then the other compensation is trees and landscaping with one exception, and that is on parcel number 21. Jim and Ginger Bella Love, they have, the 2,200 or 2,300 is for their trees, and then the 74 is for them rebuilding their fence. The, the front part of their fence will be torn out, and instead of doing that with the project, we're paying them to rebuild it. So all of the other ones, the compensation is related to landscaping and trees that are going to be removed during the project. Yeah, we, we're glad to get this far. There's a couple that we still don't have. Took longer than we expected, but again, like I said, we're glad to be at this point, and we would recommend, between us and JCG, we would recommend approval of this resolution.
Motion to approve resolution.
Move by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Ham. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, next resolution is consideration of light installation at Prairie Lakes.
Okay, Prairie Lakes subdivision is, we are, we're working with John Morrissey to accept those streets into the city's maintenance. Daryl and I have met with them over the last couple of years to get that ready for the city to take that over. One of the requirements, though, is that we have a street light at the intersection of Walton and Prairie Lakes Drive. That light will be put in by Alliant. We will use, I believe they still have some money in a sinking fund. What's the term? There's some money available associated with, with the escrow. Thank you. There's an escrow for the subdivision that will be used to pay for the light, and then the city will pay the electricity in the future. But the installation should be covered by the escrow, so we need council's approval of that additional light.
So moved.
Move by Ham.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other questions?
Yes. Who owns the light pole after it's been installed?
This.
We do.
Yeah, I was going to say the city. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
And I should say, unless the homeowners association wants to put in a very fancy pole, something beyond our standard, all they've asked for is, they're okay with a wooden pole? They're just asking for maybe the most downlit light that we can get. If that would change between now and when we get it installed, they may end up owning it, but.
Why would they own it?
That's the way we've done our other subdivisions, because it's if, it's not a standard installation. It's above and beyond what the city would do.
I would think that they would just pay the difference and we would still own it.
We could work out something like that if that's.
The, the light on Pleasant Plain Road, right past the bridge.
Okay.
Is that owned by the city, or do you know, Pam?
I don't know.
So that's another similar situation.
Okay.
I was just curious.
The only ones I was aware of is I was thinking there were some out in the Dogwood area that was privately owned, but it's been a while since we've installed privately owned poles.
The reason I'm asking is because someone asked me this question the other day, and I didn't know. I said, "Well, some of the poles are owned by the city, some are owned by Alliant. I didn't know anywhere privately owned."
There's very few. Like I said, I think there's, there's only just a couple in, in one subdivision, and I cannot think where it's at, so.
Okay.
Okay, great. Go ahead and call the roll.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have another question now. Sorry.
Next resolution, consideration of tax abatement application for, oh, what, I'm sorry.
I had another question came in my head regarding light poles, so if someone came in and wanted to do a small cell, small cell installation, we would need to determine the ownership of every pole that they wanted to use.
That's a good question for your city administration.
Right. I'm bringing it up as why we would want to know who owns the poles.
I'm sorry, what?
This is the reason why we would want to know who owns the poles.
The way Daryl explained it to me, Daryl Bisgard, was the wooden ones we lease and the metal ones we own, but that's probably not 100% true all the time, but.
It's a pretty broad statement.
Yeah, well, basically, the downtown ones, those are ours.
Yeah.
But, the wooden ones, Alliant owns, and they bill us for the use.
And my thought process that we have a couple that are privately-owned, maybe I'm thinking that they were privately paid for, but we own them now.
Right.
Do we need any clarification on any of this at the next meeting?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I got my marching orders.
Okay, great. Okay, now, let's move on to the next resolution. Consideration of tax abatement application for the 5355 East Broadway Avenue. This is Tim Carey, I believe.
Move approval.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other questions? No, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And the next tax abatement at 506 South Third Street, against Tim Carey.
Move approval.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any questions? No, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance first reading, and then, there is a memo about how we're going to charge for the charging station fees. So, Melanie, you wanna explain?
Okay. So, the charging station, the capital cost was paid for by the city and through a grant from the DOT. The actual usage, or the electricity that's used, is paid for by the individual users. The way that this particular station works is, you slide your card like you would at a vending machine, or pay at the pump, and then, it charges that person's card. Because we own the station, we set the rates. Some of our gas stations, they, I believe that theirs are free, but because we're the city, and we wanna make sure that we recoup our costs, we do have to implement some fees. So, what the memo states is that approximately sixteen cents per kilowatt is our cost from Alliant for the electricity itself. Then, the monthly minimum is on top, the monthly minimum of sixty-five.
Cents per day.
Sixty-five cents per day, thank you. That is on top of what's being used. So, what the memo states is roughly estimating how many people are going to use this, what do we need to set the rates at in order to recoup both the electricity cost and the minimum charge? So, best guess, you know, a few cars a month, which means that thirty cents per kilowatt-hour would recoup our cost. And I definitely feel after this has been installed for a while, maybe at the beginning of next fiscal year, we look at these rates again. Charge point, the station will collect a lot of data as far as where the users are from, you know, are they local, or are they out of town? How long they're staying there, how long they're charging. So, we'll be able to have a lot more information to help us better set the fees, but we need to start with something, and so, we're recommending starting with this. I also believe that we need to consider waiving the readings. Hopefully, the station is operational tomorrow, or in the next couple of days, and we'd like to turn it on immediately. I mean, it'll be operational, but we can not turn it on. We'd like to turn it on as soon as it's operational, and so, therefore, we need to have these fees in place. Did I cover everything, Michael?
Yep, yeah. I helped do a little bit of online sleuthing, trying to figure out what the right rate fee, and thirty cents is pretty standard. Now, a lot of places, they do offer it for free, because if it's a business, they're trying to entice people to come, pull up, charge your vehicle, and then, use their place of business. We're trying to entice people to come to our downtown, but at the same time, you know, we don't want this to become an expense for taxpayers to charge people's vehicles. So, you set the rate, thirty cents kilowatt-hours, very fair. We'll get to this in the project update, but this project has been dragged on much longer than expected by the contractor, and we are a couple of weeks away from the end of the year, and that's when the grant, all the grant money is due, or the grant reimbursement forms. So, I've got them all filled out, ready to go. Melanie's got her stuff ready to go. We're always waiting on the contractor. It would be much cleaner if this were done, rather than finishing it in January, just for the sake of all the grant paperwork, so.
Got a quick question.
Yeah.
How about maintenance of the charging station itself? How does that, what do we expect that to be over the?
We bought a five-year warranty, per the grant requirements.
Which included maintenance.
Yeah.
So, everything's covered for five years?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we need to suspend the rules first.
Yep.
So, I move we suspend the rules.
Okay.
For this motion.
Motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
And then, we move to approve this charging schedule for the EV chargers, that's what it's called? And then, we move it from the first to the third and final reading.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Ham. Any further discussion? No, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Melanie, if you, and I guess Aaron, and I'll try to too, if we put in our tickler files for June, that that be reviewed, and if we need to make an adjustment, we do it then. Okay? Great, thank you. Under the mayor's report, we already did that. I just wanted to remind people, starting in, well, our first meeting in January, we will bring back the diversity, equity, and inclusion statement of intent for the city of Fairfield. So, I just wanted to remind you that that will be on the agenda, and so, you know, you can review it, and if you have any questions or want to talk to those members beforehand, any changing and wording that you'd like to see. I think they are meeting tomorrow. I think they're meeting tomorrow.
It was today.
Oh, it was today?
Yeah.
I was thinking.
According to the city website, it was.
I was thinking it was Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, Tuesday at 4:00.
Tuesday, so. And it's just a reminder, because it's, you know, it does have wording that, you know, I want to make sure that you put some thought into. And then, also, I wanted to update you, or just keep you aware, on Friday, I had a meeting with some community partners, schools, Marshy School, Fairfield Schools, different representatives from both of those schools, along with Melanie, and some individuals in our community are very concerned about what's happened over the last couple of months in the community, and working on mental health issues, and what things, what resources do we have in the community, and what things can we do as a community to make it better? So, there's gonna be more coming out about this. Melanie's been great. She's been doing some of her own research, putting some things together. And I understand there was a meeting also at the hospital where they put a lot, they're putting a lot of resources together in one area, and trying to get this out to the community. So, there's a lot of things going on in the background to help the community, and I'm sure we'll hear more about it as that goes forward. There's, right now, a plan to have a community meeting in January. That'll be about, not quite the middle of January, planned for now, so there'll be more about that. I just want to keep you aware that that was kind of going, that was going on in our community, so. That's all I have, and next is the city attorney report. John, do you have anything tonight?
Just, I want to comment on one thing. I gotta go to the microphone. We had a visit about two meetings ago from a gentleman named Chris Sorflaten. And I don't know, I'm not, I don't have any friends on Facebook, but I know people that know Facebook, and there's been something going around. I got asked about it twice today, as far as whether council is putting out a way to do a referendum on ordinances by having community meetings, basically discussing them on Facebook. And I just, I don't know how many of you saw it, but anyway, Mr. Sorflaten, as of about midday today, had forty-four back and forths from people responding. Half of those responses were his, but he said, basically, the Fairfield City Council has asked us to host a forum to discuss this topic and modify our city code according to popular opinion, live music afterwards, and a dance party. You know, that's kind of cute, but that ain't the way it works, and as far as whether it behooves us to have somebody go to that forum or not, I think it's something we don't want to allow to become an established Facebook event. Much as I know social media is the big thing, I'm worried about if any of us start stepping into this kind of stuff, that we're gonna have some real public record and open meeting law requirements. Plus, anything gets said on Facebook, whether that's exactly what we told Mr. Sorflaten he could do or not. My recall was, he was here, we told him, if you want to talk with your friends about this, this is okay, but I think it was unanimous among the council that we're not repealing our mowing ordinance as far as the perspective that night, so. Unless I'm wrong and was in a different room, I just, you know, I don't know if anybody else saw this or was tempted to respond, but I'd leave it alone.
Yeah, I agree with you, John. I think that's what I heard that night. And I didn't know that was going on.
We didn't set a committee, and we didn't authorize anybody to go do any research.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you for keeping us informed. Committee and board reports. Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
Mr. Twohill's on the phone, so I told him I'd step up and give the report as my last favor to him, as a council member. We met tonight at 6:00. We had three requests. One was for a stop box repair reimbursement request at a property here in town, where the gentleman had a private contractor come and do some fixing up of the stop box, so that the city crew can turn his water off when he goes out of town in the winter, and showed a picture of a bent bar and claimed that that bar was bent by a contractor who the city hired fifteen years ago to replace the sidewalk. And we just felt like it was very inconclusive evidence that it was the city's fault. Plus, our city attorney said it's, you know, kind of too far back to really make a claim. The property owner was unable to find any of the people he says were responsible for at the time, and so, committee took no action, and didn't think that it was a claim that we could really respond to. And it was six hundred and some dollars, so it wasn't a whole lot. We had a sewer reduction request for another property, and we had a memo from a city water employee who said they checked it and couldn't find any evidence that the water did not go into the sewer system. So, as per our policy, if the water does go in the sewer system, then we treated it, and that costs money, and they have to pay for that. Also, the property owner, it was a rental property, the property owner replaced some appliances, and the water use went way down, which also points to that it was internal leaking. So, we recommend to the council to deny this particular request, because there's no evidence that the water did not go into the sewer, and so, I'll make the motion to deny the request for sewer reduction for 600 West Broadway.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to deny this request. Any other discussion or questions? No, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
And finally, we had a sewer reduction request, 400 Highland Street, and this one did turn out the water was leaking into a crawl space into the ground, and so, city water employee confirmed that in writing. So, we will make the recommendation to forgive the sewer portion of this, the overage, because we didn't treat it, so there was no expense to the city. So, I'll make the motion to approve. Melanie, or sorry, Rebecca has that?
I'm in the other room.
The 400 Highland Street, what's the amount? All right.
Tom, do you have that written down in front of you there? Hold on a second, I'll run my desk real quick. Oh, well, Rebecca will get it.
I'm gonna make it.
$148.12.
$748, see, I remember it as $478, so I'm glad.
John wrote it down. Thanks, Tom.
John wrote it down.
Yep. All right.
Okay, so, it's been moved to forgive the sewer portion of $748.12? Was there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Flornoy.
Sewer portion is seventy, is a $700 figure, right? The sewer portion is that big.
$748.12.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Is that right? Rebecca, $748.12?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have a motion by Hallie and a second by Flornoy. Any other questions? No, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any other, we don't have any other committee reports listed. We're gonna do the fire station down at administrator reports, so we'll go there. You gonna go first, Aaron?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you look on an attachment, I did, or I did send out a memo today, kind of overviewing what we've been doing here in the city office. Budget has been going well. We actually had a couple-hour meeting this morning, talking about bonds and how those were getting paid for. As we had that special meeting, we were talking about the debt certification that we've been submitting. We had a couple in the consent agenda also today, because we made some, didn't necessarily make some mistakes, but we had some overview, oversights that we had to fix. So, overall, those are the, and once I got the memo written and submitted to Rebecca, and then she sent it off, then I found that we had a, I forgot that we had an email that, from Moody's Investors, that they're recommending that our bond rating stays the same at an A3 level. Travis Squires and myself argued with them a little bit. This is, it's not a bad thing, but our bond rating, since I've been here, has been moved up twice, and at the lowest level, it was down to a BAA1. When I got here, we moved it up to a B, oh, no, it went down to a BAA3, excuse me. When I got here in 2017, it was at a BAA2. It moved up to a BAA1 in 2018, and then, was moved up to an A3 in 2019. According to their chart, we should be at an AA, AAAB, I think is, or an AAB, but they have us downgraded twice from there to an A2, then to an A3, because of our past bond deficit, or budget, or fund deficits. Travis and I both argued with them a little bit that this is quite significant past that they're still dinging us for, and I actually asked them, how long are they gonna continue to hold that against us? And they wouldn't answer that question. So, they did change some verbiage in the actual comments to be more positive, but they still stuck with the A3 rating. I think Travis did tell me that their rating falls off after next year, so it doesn't matter so much. We won't ask them, we can go to Standards and Poor and ask for a rating, which they give us a higher rating anyway, which they give, Standard and Poor gives us an A rating, and they gave us the A rating back in 2016. So, it's not a huge issue, but we were going to bat for the city, because we've done a fantastic job with our funds over the last four or five years, and we're pretty proud of that, so.
Other than that. Should be the rating for the bonds, if we were to issue bonds to the fire department, that's the rating they would come under.
Well, if we used Moody, if we used Standard and Poor, we'd get an A rating.
Right.
So, that brings me to another couple of things that I needed to talk about. I would like to request a Ways and Means meeting. We need to talk about our depository a little bit. I've had a, in my memo, you can see where I talked about, I've talked with Iowa State Bank, and I actually had a meeting with Ron Haynes a week or so ago. Those are good meetings, have been, both been good meetings. Would just like to have a conversation with Ways and Means to kind of discuss our next step. We can still approve our normal depository at the beginning of the year like we normally do, and we can change it at any time. So, it's not an emergency to change here at the beginning of the year. We also, with the sale of our spec building, we had some funds set aside to pay for interest on that note for the spec building. We don't have to pay that this year, so I would like to request the council to, I think we could fix these chairs in here, replace the iPads that you all have, which are first-generation iPads, and possibly even replace the mics, which has been a request from.
Jason.
Jason, to do that. So, if that's okay with you, I've got a quote for chairs, I'll get a quote for iPads, and then, we're gonna get a quote for the mics, too.
Do you want a motion on that?
Yeah.
To move forward on that?
Yeah, I would like a motion from the council to direct, allow me to do that, because I am spending money that we haven't necessarily budgeted.
Well, you're just gonna put a proposal together for Ways and Means.
I can do that.
Is that what you mean? Is that what you mean? Or do you want people to buy it now?
I'd like to get it going.
When do you want the Ways and Means committee meeting?
Uh...
Before Christmas or after?
We can do that, I think we can do that after. Although, well...
Can we just do it on the 27th when we're here anyway?
Let's do that. On the 27th, can you be here before 5:00?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's shoot for 4:30. Oh, that's right, you're gonna be gone.
How about immediately after 6:00?
I could do it by telephone.
Okay.
I can be here by present, by telephone.
Well, then Kate, then hopefully Katie and you, and then you'd be present by phone, which is okay.
All right.
We can do that.
Or we can do it following the meeting, doesn't matter to me.
Well, we'd like to talk about the fire station because the quote for construction for the fire station, those quotes have come back somewhat high. And we've talked about using American Rescue funds for that to help with the bond. And if we commit to spend those dollars somewhere else, then we need to look at that debt service rating. If we commit to use those funds there, the council hasn't decided what we're gonna use those funds for yet. So we need to make a decision or have a recommendation from Ways and Means there. So I'd like to have that conversation in that Ways and Means meeting also about the fire station. And Melanie will talk about that a little bit more.
Do you need a little more time?
Do you want to get that over the phone?
I'm not gonna be here, I'm not gonna be physically present, so that's the only way, I can do it, if we can do it at a later time, it's fine.
Oh, I thought maybe later in the day you could be here, you'd be gone the whole, out of town.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's all right, I can do it, I think I can, it's fine.
I'll make sure I get you all the information that you need.
Right, right. Do we, what time, though? Before or after the public hearing?
Uh...
Did you make a case, is there a reason why it needs to be before or can it be?
That's just usually, what we normally do is have it before.
4:30, I mean, I could do that, that's fine with me, that's, 4:30 is fine with me.
Half hour, 30 minutes, long enough?
Okay.
About 4:15.
I could do it at 4:00.
Okay. 4:00 o'clock, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, is that set?
Is that set?
Well, we need to speak with our third member, right?
Yeah. What would I hear, tentative?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so Ways and Means on December 27th at 4:00 PM.
Tentative, yes.
Okay, that'll be the plan. Do you want to vote on that? You normally like a vote, Doug.
Not for a committee meeting schedule. Oh, yes, I would make the motion that Aaron prepare a proposal for iPads, microphones, and chairs.
Funds for the council chamber, and, well, I guess that'd all be basically council chamber.
For Ways and Means by the 27th.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Is that it for you, Aaron?
That's all I have.
Okay, Melanie, on the project update and fire station.
I'm gonna do the fire station first. So what Aaron did not mention as far as the reasoning for Ways and Means to discuss the budget is that the referendum date is fast approaching. The referendum date is March 1st. And on the minutes, at the bottom of the second page, or bottom of the first page, staff has scheduled speaking arrangements with different entities. The, we can present to them saying that we are recommending that tax, the levy doesn't go up, but that the council action still needs to happen on it, and then we can get back with those certain agencies. But that's why this decision, as far as how we are structuring the fire station payment, is important so that we can give a very solid answer on the tax levy in regards to the fire station. The other attachment on there, so I have the minutes from the meeting attached. We didn't have any official actions during the last meeting because we only had about four members present. A couple things on the drawing, I guess, sorry, I'm jumping around, Jason. Just to point out on, from what maybe we've seen before, is there's four larger bays, well, five bays technically, but the four larger vehicles are pulling west onto Fourth Street, and the rest of them are going south onto Briggs. Out of all of those bays, only three of them are back in, so that gives us nine pull-through bays, which is very good for safety. There's a lot, there's a lot of storage in here for both existing equipment, but then also preparing for future. You also see there's two future vehicles listed in the storage phase. Firefighting, Scott can tell you this, that it's changed so much in the 50 years that the current fire station has been in service, so we should prepare for the future on this as well. In the southwest corner, there is a hose towers slash anchoring, a visual feature, a literal tower in that corner. But not only does it have the aesthetic value that then the hoses can be hung there. On the floor plan, there is a dashed line in the main building part, yep, around the bathrooms and the...
Ow, Jason.
No.
Go the other way, I can't point that line.
Around the bathrooms and the sleeping quarters and the EMA office. That dash line is the area that is a storm shelter area. Code requires that the sleeping area be storm rated, but then also to provide storm shelter for the occupants of the building. So the reason why the area is rather large is because if the classroom was full, we would need to have space, which the architect decided the bathrooms are a good place for that, because there's no windows anyway. But that's where the occupants of the building would go during a storm. And then there's also the training tower, which then has concrete on three sides, so fire trucks from different departments, different towns, communities can pull, each one can pull up to the side and they can do training on the backside of the station. Then we have the classroom and reception area on the southeast corner of the building, more of, I'll say, the public side of things. We've laid it out so that the classroom space could be used, and the sleeping quarters, the fire station part can be locked down so that, you know, if there's an officer that is sleeping, they're not disturbed by someone using the classroom, or if someone's using the classroom at an evening, that part of the building is locked up. So even though we didn't have all the committee members at the meeting, staff and the task force members that were there feel like this is the layout that we should move forward with regarding the referendum. As Aaron mentioned, the cost estimate did come back higher than what we've talked about before. The primary reason is the volatility of the construction industry. We all know that prices have changed a lot over the last year, whether it's the grocery store, or labor prices, or construction prices, all of that is just constantly changing. To give you a reference, the cost estimate has $230 a square foot for the vehicle bays, a large open area, not a lot of finishes. The rec center was $150 a square foot. So that's what we're looking as far as inflation and volatility of the market in the last five years. What we're presenting has everything we need and extra space for the future. If things would continue to inflate, we feel like the cost estimate in front of you covers a reasonable amount of inflation in the next year. If there is another unprecedented year of, you know, another 35% inflation, we will have to talk about something different, we would have to modify something. But what we have in front of you, we feel really comfortable with the best that we can predict. And so then that's what gets more into the Ways and Means discussion on how that 6 million gets structured. So there's no council action regarding the fire station task force in the meeting. It's an FYI, any questions? Otherwise, the rest of it, I think, is going to Ways and Means.
I have a question, only because I went over to Washington and saw their fire station probably a year and a half ago. And they had the one bay that had this great big curtain where they could pull the trucks in and wash them on the inside.
Okay.
Does that happen here? I can't see where it would happen.
Um, so we haven't gotten into some of those details, like on the storage areas, we haven't decided exactly what all goes in each of those storage areas. The cost per square foot that the architect has used is based off of an average of the fire stations he's seen. So if the fire stations he's seen included that, it'd be worked in there. So I don't have a good answer, I can follow up on it, but Klinger does very good work, and I would expect that they have done something like that in a building before, so I will ask them about it.
Yeah, it was like the furthest bay.
Mm-hmm.
And again, it had like this, you know, this curtain that was partially see-through, so they could see, but they could pull the truck in, in the wintertime and get it washed down versus doing it outside.
Mm-hmm.
It just, I thought it was a neat, a neat feature.
Okay. Yeah, I'll let them know, or I'll ask about that. I did also forget to mention that we discussed with them about making sure the main part of the building, because of the slope on the vehicle bays and the arrangement of the building, the vehicle bays would not be a good option for solar, but the main part of the building is set up very nice for solar, so we are gonna be struck, making that side of the building structurally available for solar in the future. And again, get really good prices, maybe we can do some of that stuff at the beginning of the project rather than in the future, but we, you know, we do want to prepare for the future as best we can with the budget that we have. Okay, so there's no other questions, I'll go to the rest of the projects. As you saw tonight, we're starting on a lot of next year's projects and still trying to wrap up this year, and, well, the wastewater tree and plant project that never ends. We are continuing to work on step three, which is the grease lightning lift station and force main improvements. We do not have the land acquisition nailed down, but shortly into 2022, we will be scheduling a public meeting on that project, again, setting the groundwork for some land acquisition. What it, we will mainly on step three be purchasing temporary easements, because we'll be using the existing easement of the existing force main, so we won't be buying permanent easements like we have on our other projects, which will, which will help the budget, but will still require the public meeting regarding land acquisition. The Highway 1 Water Main Project is also finally done. They poured the patch at Highway 1 and Harrison for anyone who has been calling Daryl over the last couple days. So they did get that poured back today. Obviously, seating will need, seating and additional cleanup will be needed in '22. Then on Fourth Street and 32nd, those work, the work on those projects are mostly complete. There are still a few punch list items on Fourth Street. And then on 32nd and Fourth Street, both of those have to have a DOT review inspection because of the funding source before we can officially close those out at the council level. But the majority of the work, or I should say, all of the work that the public sees is done on those two projects. We mentioned, jumping down to the bottom of that page, we mentioned the vehicle charging station is very close, but still not there. There, there's one, or one programming issue that the contractor needs to do, and then also install the bollards. Aaron and I will talk with John Morrissey as far as if we need to take any legal action regarding the contractor not meeting the contract deadline. Michael is going to ask the DOT if we can have an extension on that grant, but, you know, if we lose the grant because of the contractor, I feel like Mr. Morrissey needs to get involved at that point. So we will do everything we can to not get to that point, but I want to let the council know that staff is very disappointed in how the project is going. And hopefully, hopefully the next time you hear about it, it's that it's working great, but unfortunately, if it doesn't get any better, we'll let you know. The entrance to Lamson Woods is almost there. I mean, the rock has been laid down, and the streets department has ordered a street sign for the lane to be called Diane Bowman Lane, and then has also ordered a Lamson Woods Trailhead street sign. In the future, we will come back to the city with an ordinance to officially name the entrance Diane Bowman Lane. One of the reasons is that it's the property owner's request to have it named, that, whether officially or unofficially, but if we officially name it, we can give it an address, and then maybe Google will stop telling people to go through Dave's Nest property to get to Lamson Woods. That is one of the reasons why we're going to officially rename it Diane Bowman Lane, or request to rename it. You'll also see in the next couple weeks that Gibb Construction will be installing a white vinyl fence on the north and east side of that gravel to separate the lane from Doc Bowman's property. Then additional seating and landscaping will happen in the spring, but we'll get that white fence up here very soon. And the last thing, just to point out to the public, that we did, a while ago, we signed an agreement with Sam Mapping there, who hosts our GIS system, to do some survey work on our sidewalks. I don't have a starting date, but this time of year, it depends on where the, what the weather is, where they need to do work, and so we might not get a heads up, a lot of heads up to say that they're coming to town. So if you see people surveying your sidewalks, we're not starting a sidewalk replacement program, we're doing our ADA transition plan, but just get that out to the public, and hopefully we'll be able to get the information, or we'll get the information back to the council for the ADA transition plan next year.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Melanie? Okay.
Thank you.
If not, we'd like to hear a last few words from Mr. Hallie.
What to say? Well, it's been, it's been a really mostly fun 12 years on the council. You know, when I got on the council in 2010, we were between administrators, so I got handed a $500,000 energy efficiency project to manage, took over the quiet zone project. And I think because of that, it kind of set the tone for what my work would be like as a council member. I don't just come to the meetings, I, I'm all up in your business, you know, and I think the city staff know that I'm there for them and always working on something. So when my younger son was in junior high, he told me that the kids would call other kids tryhards as an insult. But I want to say, being a tryhard is actually a badge of honor, and that's my, that's my request to everybody at the city, try harder, a little bit harder. You don't have to try a lot harder, but you can always learn a little bit more about city government. League of Cities is there for you. City staff, remember that the public is not the enemy. Yes, some members of public are annoying, but, but they're, they're our constituents, they're our customers. So always have that attitude, you know, we're trying to please our customers. So that's my only advice to my fellow city officials. I'm proud of the work I've done, you know, started with the two aforementioned projects, city quiet zone project, probably could never top that in terms of the effect that that's had on our community. Even these last two years, getting that Lamson Wood management plan, getting those tables on Central Park, sorry, Martha, getting that electric vehicle charging station, you know, those were projects that I'll just say may have not happened, not gonna toot my own horn, had I not taken that initiative. So you guys all have that power, too. You know, someone used the analogy that Fairfield's like a sandbox, it's a very safe town to try new things. We're only 10,000 population, we know each other, so play a little, you know, try something new, propose something, bring something to the council that's a new... new, propose something, bring something to the council that's a new initiative or a new idea, but be willing to work on it. You know, just pass it off as an idea, say, I'll help make this happen. Because that's the stuff that I think, besides all the wonderful relationships I've had, it's those projects, it's that, that impact that I can see I made that I'll take with me when I'm gone. So, it's been a fun ride. Only people who were here when I started, John Morrissey, I think Jason, you were sitting back there even back 12 years ago, Rebecca was not the clerk at the time, but I was on the committee that hired Fire Chief Fawn, I was on the committee that hired City Engineer Melanie, Aaron, those were all great decisions we made. So, I'm proud of what I've done and I thank everybody for mostly supporting, you know, all my crazy ideas. I think I got a lot, I got away with a lot of stuff in 12 years, so, thank you and I'll miss you, I won't be too far away and I'll always, my heart will always be with Fairfield.
Thank you, Michael. And I'll just say, if you get more ideas, send me an email. Okay? After you leave town. So...
Oh, I just want to say, thanks, Michael, for all your hard work and the passion and the obvious love you have for the work here and the city that we live in. I think everybody sees that, it's very obvious and appreciate it. I know you've done a lot of hard work while you're here and I'm sure wherever you end up next, you'll be doing the same kind of thing because that's what you do, I think. So, I just want to say thank you for that and I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Michael, I would sort of say some of Doug's remarks. I mean, to me, you've been very creative for the community and sort of there are times when I'm sure we all could have said, I don't think this is going to work, but you were willing to continue sort of putting it in front of us and I think you certainly have been, as I say, a creative person for the community, which we all need very badly in our, in our communities. That it's very easy to sort of go along with everything just the way it is. And I think that's the biggest, probably one of our biggest handicaps is that we're afraid to sort of reach out and try something new and hopefully it will succeed, but if it doesn't, sort of like the old adage, try, try again. And so, I would certainly say you have epitomized that aspect of it, so, thank you, it's really been fun working with you and getting to know you and things over the years, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
I appreciate your passion for city governance, Michael. I think it's, it's the kind of thing that people need to see and experience to appreciate how important it is. You're an example of how one person can make a difference in a community. It's probably one person with an idea and who decides to move with that idea, how they can change things. And that's a lesson for me and I think it's a lesson for many who have been, who have been witness to your involvement and your engagement and your passion over the last 12 years, so I appreciate that and I've learned from it, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
And that you did step up when you were young and learned as you went, and that's what I keep saying to young people and I am thankful that you gave a good example of that, that you don't have to wait until you're 60 some years old to think about it, yeah.
Yep.
That's a good point, because we need to understand from all generations.
Yeah.
And that's what makes our city so wonderful, you know, we need that intergenerational interaction and ideas and that's, that's a very important aspect of creating a good city. So, again, I want to invite everybody, there's cake behind there, so if you want cake, come join us. And with that, we wish you the best of luck and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Move by hand?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned, thank you.